Roll call.
Parker?
Here.
Ms. Alonich?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Zittagrun?
Here.
Chisel?
Here.
Neal?
Here.
Okay. Public comment time. If there's anybody who wishes to speak about anything that is on the agenda tonight, you can come up during this time. You'll have three minutes. And then on to the next. State your name and address.
You bet. Good evening. My name is Tim Wagner, 505 Franklin Street here in Decorah. Related to one of the agenda items tonight, discussing the outreach and education on the upcoming MEU vote in March. I just want to applaud the council for scheduling the second vote. I agree the city should put adequate resources as necessary for both managing the vote as well as helping to educate the voters on this issue and encourage voter participation. It's extremely important to voters of Decorah regardless of how one may feel about an MEU. We don't know yet how Alliant Energy is going to conduct themselves in this upcoming vote. We certainly know how they conducted themselves at the last vote with a pretty significant misinformation campaign that confused a lot of voters. And I can't tell you how many voters I've talked to since then has said had they known the things that they should have known or didn't believe at the time, they would have probably voted a different way. So I just applaud the city for putting the effort into getting out the education. Whether there's a council member, you're in favor of the city pursuing this or not, it shouldn't make any difference. What should be your concern is making sure the voters have good, solid information that they can believe and trust before they make that kind of decision. So, and in addition to that, I printed off copies of an article that was in the press just today regarding some information about the rates in the state of Iowa that I thought is pretty important to this issue. Thank you.
Next. State your name and address.
Thomas Hanson, 3469 Locust Road. Good to be here again. We had another successful Thanksgiving dinner, Decorah Community Thanksgiving Dinner this year. We got 323 meals out the door with the people that were in the church and the volunteers. We served close to 550 people. This all happened through donations and volunteers. And that's why I have always made the speech at the Thanksgiving dinner that this is my favorite holiday out of the year because it shows what we all can do if we work together towards common good. We had Kirsten volunteer to make out our delivery maps. Jeff Odie delivered to all the emergency services. And John Anderson came again like he's done for several years and helped us deliver meals. And even new mayor came there and had fellowship with people and had a meal. And that's what America is all about. Coming together and to do a good job and help out people who really had no other place to go maybe during Thanksgiving. And we showed them the love and the strength of our community by providing them a meal and for fellowship. And I guess that's what frustrates me sometimes so much with some people on the council that they use the words, you know, diversity, equality, inclusion, tolerance, but they either want to apply them to only certain groups or they don't want to put forth the effort and the sacrifice to make it work. But I know it works. I've been doing this for 26 years now and I know it works. And that's why I will continue to try to show the hypocrisy sometimes between what people say, what they do, and what we can actually do when we all work together towards a common good. And I will always continue to try to do that. So thank you for the people on the council here that volunteered that day. And I'd like to thank all the community for coming together and, like I said, providing another good meal to everybody. This is the biggest meal we've ever done. And it's a long way from when Jim and Barb Dale started with one turkey that fed everybody. So I hope to see it continue to grow throughout the years. Thank you very much.
Next.
I'm Carol Berkland, 1018 Walnut Street, Decorah, City Council Ward 3. My question is this. Why, at the beginning of every council meeting, are any persons from any place invited to speak on any issue unrelated to the meeting's agenda? Iowa's open meeting law mandates city council meetings must be open to the public, but the law does not, I repeat, does not automatically grant citizens or anybody else the right to speak. Second question. Why are persons who are not Decorah citizens and who don't live here allowed to use council meetings as a platform to repeatedly air personal political grievances, attack council members, and threaten lawsuits? The answer is, they do this because the council invites them to do it. Recently, a purely private matter was repeatedly dragged into public view here, and it was nothing less than a disgraceful spectacle. Online, I felt like I was watching some cheap cheesy TV reality show, but no, it was the Decorah City Council. I take pride in our city, so when I see an institution like the city council used and abused by people who unlike me, don't live here, don't own property here, don't pay taxes to support any of my city's government and services, something is seriously wrong. City councils all over Iowa have instituted reasonable rules to ensure orderly meetings. Algonah, Iowa, is a smaller town just west of Decorah, and there is a 13-page document on the city council of the city council rules of procedure that's on the city's website. At the very beginning, it states that Iowa allows city councils to determine their own rules of procedure. And in the public participation section, among other provisions, it states, one, the council, mayor, and the city staff are responsible to maintain common courtesy and decorum at meetings. Two, persons should speak in civil and courteous manner. Three, debate on policy is healthy. Debate on personalities is not. The presiding officer can cut off anything that is too personal, too loud, inappropriate, or repetitive. And four, language which attacks the personal character of city officials is not allowed. As far as I can see, the only limitation on public comment that we have here in Decorah is a time limit of three minutes. But it is the content and the attitude of the speech that needs to be addressed. As I see it, the Decorah City Council has a problem and the council needs to fix it. One more thing. These procedural rules should apply to all Decorah city committees. So last week, a woman, again, not a citizen of Decorah, ran it on and on before Park and Rec about bringing horses into Decorah, riding them up and down every street and alley and doing god knows what else with her horses. If she were in Algonah, Iowa, she would have been out of order.
Next.
Jerry Donlin, 104 Highland Drive, Decorah. Just an update, I'd like to ask if any of the council members were able to watch the video with the I U utility board. I know Mr. Zittagrun has because he was at the meeting. It's presumably on one of your archives. Travis can get it. It's the one where Attorney Lynch specifically stated three times, I believe, that if we're going to do this MEU, they cannot do it on a rate alone. We will not hear it. So we're spending money to take this for no apparent reason if we should do a little more research. I also would like to know if it's possible to do through a petition to change the election date. I assume this is something I'd have to check at the county auditor's office. I don't feel a march is equitable time. There's a lot of residents that are, taxpayer residents that are missing, on their winter vacations. I'd like to see that changed. Thirdly, is there a way to find a total amount we're spending on running this MEU election? We're approving dollars here and there. I think the public needs to know what it's going to cost to run that election. It's only fair to the taxpayers and to people that are not in favor of it. You should put that together. Seems like when we did the fast fiber or whatever you call it, that that's drug on and on and there's a lot of expenditure involved. I know you can't predict what it's going to cost, but you can at least say what you're going to put a limit of some kind on what you're going to spend on this process. Thank you.
Next. Hearing none. Seen any more? Consent agenda.
Item A, minutes of the November 18, 2024 council meeting. B, claims. C, fiscal year 25 Street Finance Report.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Olson, seconded by Zittagrun. Any further discussion? Hearing seen none. Roll call.
Olson?
Hi.
Zittagrun?
Hi.
Parker?
Hi.
Ms. Alonich?
Hi.
Chisel?
Hi.
Neal?
Hi.
Motion carried. Consider resolution to approve allocation of resources towards the MEU vote. Give background on that, please, Travis.
Yes, so at the November 25th work session, the council discussed the resources that they wish to allocate towards the MEU vote for educational materials. I use the term materials, but I mean the total process. So I want to be clear about that. And by total process, I mean postage, not just the physical what's being created. That question was posed to me prior to the start of the meeting, so I want to be clear about that. But those educational materials are including both financial and staff resources. The proposed resolution is based on that discussion and states that the city would allocate 15,000 from sustainability funds. In addition, staff will create a webpage dedicated to information on the MEU vote. All material placed on this website, as well as potentially used as educational material, would be considered and approved by the council as a master list of content. The Sustainability Commission is authorized to use the approved content and up to the remainder of the 15,000 for educational material distribution such as flyers and direct mailers.
No, we discussed this at the last city council meeting? Did you want to say something, Kirsten?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I'll make a motion. Everyone's looking at me. I'm like, okay, I'll do it.
You move the resolution?
What?
You move the resolution?
I move the resolution.
Motion made by Neal, seconded by Zittagrun. Discussion.
I guess I would like to make a statement a little bit about this. I've heard from a number of people, from emails to text messages to direct contact conversations I've had with people. They're wondering why we're quote wasting this kind of money on these type of projects, why we're spending taxpayer dollars on these type of projects. And I'd just like to address that real quickly. I'll try to be as brief as possible, but back in 2020, the city of Decorah entered into an electric franchise fee agreement with Alliant Energy. And we're currently at a rate where they collect 4% of people's bills that come in, and they pay that to the city of Decorah for use of our right of way where their infrastructure lies. And they pay that to the city of Decorah, and the city of Decorah then has chosen to use that money for, one, sustainability and, two, for streets. At the same time in 2020, they set up a sustainability commission to look into different things around the city that were how we could best go forward with our city to keep it sustained, to be the beautiful and wonderful place we know it to be. They had several public forums in reference to that. And in those public forums, people came to the conclusion, there was eight, what they called vision statements, or priorities that the city should look at for going in the future. The very first one of those on that vision statement was electric use. How best to use electrical stuff here in the city of Decorah? How to most efficiently use it? And how best to use it for the consumers here in Decorah? The fifth one on that was education and communication. How best to communicate things better with the public and educate public on different things that are happening within the city? So if you look at the three things that have happened, the electrical franchise fee that we've got, and then it went to sustainability, and two of the eight things I thought were important to look at was energy and how most efficiently to use that, and then how best to educate the public on these things. So I think it only stands to reason that that's exactly where that funding should come from, and that would be a perfect use of those funds to educate people on this so that we have the knowledge and the information we need when this vote comes up on March 4th. People talk about this money being wasted. I don't think it's being wasted if we do it in the right way. I think the Sustainability Committee is going to recommend things like we send a brochure out to everybody. Well, if we want to make sure that money doesn't get wasted, don't take that brochure and just throw it in the trash. Take it and read it. It's going to be, contain a lot of factual information about what an MEU is. What does a yes vote mean? What does a no vote mean? What will that mean if we end up with a no vote going forward if the majority are no? What will it mean going forward if we have the majority of yes people, or yes votes on that? So that will ensure that that money does not get wasted. It goes to educate the public on how best to vote on this thing. And the second way not to waste it is make sure you get out and vote. The vote is, or the election will be March 4th. Early voting will start on February 12th, 20 days prior to that. I talked to Ben Steinis today, and if you're going to be going south for the winter or be gone during that time, you can currently put in for an absentee ballot as early as right now. So if you know you're not going to be around for it, make sure you put in for an absentee ballot. As soon as the ballots come into the auditor's office up there, they'll ship them out to you. So that's not an excuse that you're not going to be in town to vote. People can get absentee ballots and still vote. Early voting will start, as I said, on February 12th, and the vote will be on March 4th. And I'm sure I speak for almost everybody up here, the best thing we can do is get the most people out to the polls to vote on that day so we have the best information going forward to make the decisions we need on this. That's all I got.
Other discussion from the other council people?
Yeah, first of all, I think Kirsten made a fantastic point and definitely did a spiel that I think was fantastic and I think is what I wanted to kind of portray, and like I said, he did a great job doing it. One thing I'd also kind of like to propose to possibly counsel for logistics of this is, I don't, I believe the next Sustainability Commission is on the 18th. Is that correct?
As long as that's Wednesday.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I think like logistically with this kind of moving forward, if this vote passes, I'd kind of like to see, you know, obviously we have Emily who is the sustainability liaison. Maybe her and Travis can meet with Jim, kind of have an outline prior to the sustainability meeting so they can kind of get together, talk about materials, ideas of what the council's looking for. We had that, or that writings from Carly that I believe we talked about. Maybe getting that from her probably as soon as possible for this meeting so they can kind of take that information. If those three would like to get together, sit, talk about it. So at that next Sustainability Commission, Jim can take it and say this is kind of where the city is. Travis would be there. Our liaison would be there, and then they can kind of move forward. So I would like to see that if that is at all possible.
Okay.
That makes sense, and thanks. I do think if we could pass, if we passed Carly's language, and we talked about this at the work session, right? So if Carly wrote, and she has written, if she shares that document so everyone can see the language, and if we officially then on the 16th say, this language is great, we're good with it, that way the Sustainability Commission doesn't have to keep, it won't work if we have to micromanage everything they do, right? Which is why I think we talked about master document. And so if we could do that on the 16th, then when Sustainability met on the 18th, they could just take the ball and run with it because they're going to have to probably look at a graphic designer, someone who maybe wants to volunteer or hire, and they're going to have a lot of work to do, and I don't want to just throw that in their lap without us having our work done.
And you are good for having that.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. And then I think Travis would have eyes, I mean, as a city, I think we can say Travis has eyes on it to make sure that it is indeed what we passed, and good.
There will be more than just Travis's eyes on it.
Of course.
Just pointing that out.
I will contact her again. She and I have been in contact, and I haven't talked to her since Thanksgiving.
Awesome. Yeah, no, thanks, Brian. I think that's really a great idea. A couple of things I want to say, obviously, I think that the, I echo Kirsten's sentiments. I think the 15,000 that's allocated within the sustainability for education and outreach, and also actually website updates, which is great, fits for the scope of this work. And I do want to address, I think it was Mr. Donovan's comments in the public session, and just reiterate, I think so much of why we need the material is because there is a lot of misinformation. So if you go and you watch the videos, I think what's really important is the lawyer did say, and that is true, that a community should not apply to take on a service area if it is rates alone that they are looking at. Which is why it's important for us to get information from the utility board because I think that there are lots of ways in which if we invest in our own utility grid, we will serve Decorah in a manner that meets the needs of Decorah citizens, different than Alliant, because our only customers will be ourselves, right? In a way that Alliant has to think broadly about the entire state. The other thing, and I just read this quickly, so Tim, thank you so much for bringing it, and I know, I wish everyone had a copy of this, but it is interesting within this, I think this was a result, the article is a result of the recent rate increases, and I think it's important to note that groups of businesses across the state of Iowa are getting together to say, wait a minute, Alliant is not, their rates are not fair. We are not economically competitive. And I do think that is something else we are looking at, right? Is this sort of economic competitively, is that a word? Competitiveness? Economic competitiveness, right? That we are at a disadvantage when we have Alliant. So I think that's important. I think talking about the other ways, how we want to invest in clean energy, these are all things that we as a council, if we had a yes vote, could do. And so I don't want to, I want the public to understand all of those things, right? Because if you just take a snippet, that can be very misunderstood in terms of what the utility board meant. Other than that, I think that's what I had.
Just for clarification, I think you meant Mr. Donlin?
Oh, Mr. Donlin, sorry.
Yep, not Donlin.
Sorry.
I just quickly wanted to acknowledge Jerry's comments, too. I think that he said two things that I think are worth us hearing again. One, it's worth rewatching the video of, I think there's, both when we had David Lynch talk with us, but also when the MEU bore, I'm sorry, the I U B, which is now the commission, it's not a board anymore. Also, when they talked to us, I think both of those videos are well worth us as leaders watching, and I commend them to the whole community as well. It's important to remember, though, that the election in March is not about the robustness of Decorah's presentation to the Iowa Utilities Board demonstrating our competency for taking over an electric grid. This is not an election about forming an actual utility that provides power. That's a later step. This is simply step one, and it's good for us to remember that step one is simply this, having this utility that operates but doesn't necessarily provide any electric service yet. That this is what the election's about, and I think that it's important to keep people from being distracted by things that are after that. I do appreciate Jerry's comments there and also his encouragement that we consider scheduling the election for the time that results in the most people being able to vote. I think Kirsten's points are well taken, that there are absentee ballots for a reason. And if you're going south for the winter, please take me with you. It's just been a cold day. I guess the other thing I wanted to say is that when I moved to Decorah in January of 2017, I was faced with, you know, pretty soon after, a ton of information about the upcoming MEU election. And I had earnest people knocking on my door. I don't know, maybe Emily was one of them, although I didn't know her at the time. And got a lot of information in flyers and saw things in the paper. And I talked to friends who told me things that they now wish they hadn't told me because it turns out a lot of what they were hearing wasn't true. Which is to say that I think I participated in that election the way a lot of people do, with information that was inaccurate in some places and without access to really good data about what my vote meant. It would have helped me in 2017 to get a letter from the city, not taking a side, but simply saying, hey, we've called this special election. Here's why we did it. Here's what Iowa Law says about what we can do. Here's what a yes vote would mean. Here's what a no vote would mean. I would have been a more informed voter, and I hope no one here thinks that's a bad thing. Is $15,000 a lot of money? I think so. I think that's an intersection we could make safer. I think that's, you know, benefits for a great employee that we could secure. I don't dismiss that the value of that money to our city, but I can't imagine too many better investments for us than ensuring that the people who turn out in March have access to as good an information as possible. Because they're going to have access to a lot of other kinds of information. And that's why I'm in support of this resolution.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Neal?
Hi.
Zittagrun?
Hi.
Ms. Alonich?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Chisel?
No.
Parker?
Hi.
Motion carried. We have an opening on the Decorah Human Rights Commission. We're continuing to take applications for an appointment on the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Sustainability Commission. And those will be due December 6th. City manager?
We're entering the crux of, well, at the staff level, budget planning. Department heads are working diligently to get those to carry so that she can compile them, and we're doing that all based on the goal-setting discussions that council had at the last meeting. A number of successes were pointed out and things that we're still working on. And so it's always reassuring to know that we are, we are actually achieving the goals that council has set out and that those are being observed. So that's always good to know, especially as we move into January, which is when the, I'll say the real fun begins because that's when we coordinate the budget and every year trim down what we want to try and do to match a budget of what we're going to get. And January starts the legislative session, which who knows what that's going to bring? But I can't be the only one that received a mailer about property taxes for this campaign's cycle. So we know that those are going to be on the forefront and going to potentially be something else we have to deal with this year again.
Carrie?
Just wanted to remind everybody, since it's getting towards the end of the year, that to be on the agenda list, recipient list, there is a form on the website to complete. We do that annually. We do that annually, so if you're on there and you want to stay on that list, please go fill out that form, or if you would like to be added to that list, that can be found on the Decorah, City of Decorah website. If you have questions, please call the office.
I have a question. So that's not just media, it's anybody?
Anybody can be on that.
Would want to be on that list. They would get a hold of you.
They would complete that form.
Complete the form.
If you have questions, feel free to contact me.
Thanks for clarifying that. Okay, let's start with Kirsten.
Real quick, I just wanted to reiterate what Tom Hanson had said. The community meal was a real big success. My wife and I kind of did oversee the delivery portion, we did deliver 177 meals. John Anderson was helpful in that. He took one of the routes out and delivered those. I don't know how many they served in the church, but it was quite a few again. It's a great deal that they do for the community and stuff like that. Like I said, it was a big success again, so thanks for everybody that helped.
Christopher.
Nothing tonight.
Parker.
I have nothing either.
Steve.
Christmas at Luther's this weekend. I think there's limited tickets available. I'm excited for the show this year. I also want to wish everyone a, you know, happy holidays, and I hope that your Thanksgiving celebrations were good, and that's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Randy.
Excuse me, nothing this evening, Mayor.
Emily.
I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, echo for everyone who helped with the community meal, thank you. And also, we had the opportunity to go to Holiday Lights this weekend, it's always magical, so thanks to everyone who puts their time and energy towards that as well. And then I'm getting a lot of questions about fiber, and I didn't know if Chopper could give us a fiber update on where we sit. Or Travis.
Oh, so you want to defer? All right. So, yeah, this is something, point out the goal-setting session last week, which did not have this level of attendance, by the way, that Fiber the Premises is a project that's done solely by that telecommunications utility board. So you don't see or hear a lot about the work being done on that, because it's not done with the council here. So that means staff is working on a separate project, which is very much still a goal and priority of the councils, with the telecommunications utility board on what would become, if successful, we would be the second city in the state of Iowa to achieve this without being backed by a municipal electric utility, with the first being Fort Dodge, who just did this last year. And so I'm not going to get into the nitty-gritty on the state laws that make this so challenging to pull off, but know that one of the comments brought up, I think maybe at the last council meeting, expressed concerns about not knowing, about being a taxpayer and not knowing the city was looking to finance this Fiber the Premises project. That is actually one of the difficulties in state law, that the taxpayer funds are not allowed to be pledged to a municipal telecommunications utility. It's actually baked into the state law. So without an operating telecommunications utility with no revenue stream or anything, you've got to rely on the bond market and a pro forma that says, here's our business model, and assuming a take rate of 60% at X dollars a month, we can cash flow this thing. Well, that's great, but you're asking for 10 and a half million dollars to do this, so pro forma is not enough to cut it, especially when there's so many other less risky bonds that are out there. Because at the end of the day, the only, you can't even pledge that asset as collateral. So the actual fiber in the ground, the plant, the electronics, you can't pledge that as collateral. The only collateral, the, either the bondholder or the financier holds, are the net revenues from the system. So essentially, you've got to promise that we will repay you if we operate in the black. Sounds like a good loan to make, right? That's why this has been such a struggle. We've been working, Decorah's been working on for seven years, Chopper, I think, and we've been working ever since my arrival three years ago, on trying to get this across the finish line, but it is just hurdle after hurdle after hurdle. Right now, we've, we have done a bid letting, and that 10 and a half million dollar number is not one I just threw out. That is actually one of the bids that was received, one of six bids received on the build-out here, that we're running through the pro forma, through the model, to see based on the financing and a take rate, is this going to work? So right now, it's still a bit of in limbo, because we've got a lot of moving parts that have to come together all at the right time and make sure that the financing is still in place, knowing that the best that we can pledge them is that if we make money, we'll give you it.
So again, it's the revenue that's generated that pays for this utility.
Correct.
Not a taxpayer utility. I think that's, I think that's what I'm getting a lot of questions, right? I think even in the audience, there was a question about sort of like the fiber utility, right? These things take time, and some of it's just a waiting game for the right laws to be passed, or the right community to go for it first and to see what it does, or for rates like MediaCom's to go so high that we can all of a sudden be very competitive in the utility market.
Thank you. I appreciate that update. Anything else? Just to let the council know that I am doing research on the public comment portion to see how we can make it more amiable and respectful. I have resources that I can get a hold of and talk. I'm a believer that I feel like anybody in the community should be able to state how they feel. I'm a believer that people who live outside the city also, in many different ways, provide benefits for the city as well, but I also think that we could do better as far as how to allow everybody to be able to have a say. So once I kind of find some more information, I'll be sure and let you know what I would put forth.
Mayor, is this something that we do in the, when we do council rules and procedure in January? Is that when this?
No, I plan on doing that sooner than that. Because I know that the need is there, and I just feel like it needs to be addressed, you know, prior to the next meeting, so.
Oh, prior to the next meeting? Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Well moved. Thank you very much.